Poor attitude.
Don't want to hear any complaints if you can't hear them.
Yeah. We're recording, so. We got Jim protesting.
I'll behave now. For a while.
You ready to go?
Yep.
All right, it is 6:35. This is a regular meeting of the Arlington City Council. It's August 20th. And my name is Rich Nagel. I'm the mayor and I will be presiding at the meeting tonight. I will call the meeting to order and would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome everyone. We'll have a roll call. Councilmember Highland, here. Councilmember Hattlestead, here. Councilmember Batchor, here. Councilmember Yashewski is on vacation. He won't be here this evening. Councilmember Cowell will be here a little later. Also at the, on my left is City Administrator Pat Melvin. On my right, City Attorney Ross Arnison. With us in the audience this evening, Matt Johnson representing Ninkasi. Kirby Wentworth, our City Maintenance Supervisor. Amy Newsom, EDA Director. Kurt Mank representing the Enterprise. Curtis Ling and Spencer Hagenmiller representing the Arlington Fire Department. Jennifer Nelson. And Jennifer is representing the Southern Minnesota Initiative Foundation. And also Police Chief John Pedersen. And then there's a couple in the back that I'm sorry I don't remember your name. If you could introduce yourself, please. Yep.
Greg and George are blessed.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You got Kurt Ling too.
Curtis Ling? Yep.
You mentioned him?
I did.
Oh.
I did. But twice is better than that at all.
I didn't want him to feel left out.
All right. And Tim Hagenmiller also is here. Just noticed that, so. With that done, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda. There are some changes that I would like to make. Are there any changes? Anyone has to propose? I would like to move the presentation by by Matt Johnson up to right after the consent agenda. Okay? He has a little bit of a dryout ahead of him, so we're gonna get that taken care of. Are there any other changes? There are, I'm sorry, the item A is crossed out on your revised agenda. Item B, we're going to cross that out. Those minutes aren't available at this time. So that leaves one item for the consent agenda. I think that everyone is dealing with the revised agenda with the red print. Is that correct? Okay. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
I'll second it.
Motion by Councilmember Batchor, second by Councilmember Hattlestead to approve the agenda as amended. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carried. The consent agenda this evening consists of just one item and it is approval of the bills.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second it.
Motion by Councilmember Highland, second by Councilmember Hattlestead to approve the consent agenda as read. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carried. All right, I would like to introduce to you Mr. Matt Johnson, who is going to speak to us about the Ninkasi company. Could you use the microphone? Good evening, Matt.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. I guess I don't have anything prepared like the last time that I was here in front of the council. But I want-
It's a red, green light on. Push the button on the metal.
There we go.
There we go.
Thank you.
There we go. I don't necessarily have any prepared remarks or anything tonight, but between Ross and Amy and Pat and I, we've been working diligently on the purchase agreement for our project. And I believe you all were provided copies. I just wanted to come tonight to answer any questions that the council, you know, may have about some of the things that are in the purchase agreement and, you know, to explain sort of, you know, how we came to the purchase agreement that we did, if there are any questions.
Now you have in front of you two documents, actually, a purchase agreement with Caravel Ventures LLC.
Yep.
And then also a Bear Land purchase agreement. So that's a resolution and a purchase agreement, two different, separate documents. Personally, I had a chance to look them over this afternoon and I didn't find any, anything I had any questions about. Other councilmembers?
No questions on my end. So maybe, Matt, you want to tell us kind of a timeline of where we go after this?
Yep. So basically, the timeline as we, as we see it. So once we have this, this completed, there's a few other applications that we need to finish up. One of the things in the purchase agreement is the sponsorship of this JCF application, and that's a deed program. And so I'm working on completing that application. And then also part of the, part of the development agreement that's attached to the Bear Land purchase agreement is the tax abatement from the city and the county. And I'm finalizing that application as well. So I guess I'm not quite sure on the timing of those things. I do know from talking with Amy that there does need to be some public notice and a hearing for those things. And so, you know, we're probably looking at having those hearings in September, hopefully. I guess that would be my thought, kind of process on timing. Right now, we submitted plans and specifications for the project to the Planning and Zoning Committee on Friday. And I believe the different portions of that, so the architectural plans, I understand, were supposed to go to Darren for his review. And I actually had some communication with our architect, because Darren must have reached out to him. So they're starting on that review process. And so anyways, the plan around that is that we'll go in front of the planning zoning on September 6th, I believe. It's the first Thursday of September. And, you know, with that, then our, our planning, our site plan will be in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission as well as our conditionings, so.
Okay.
So basically, it's our hope to get all that completed by September 17th. So hopefully then Matt and I guess Ninkasi, but also, I guess that's not your name quite yet, but Caravel Ventures will be ready to proceed. And then I know that there's been some discussion, there's crops currently on that piece of land. And I know Ross and Matt, you've had some discussion about that as well.
Yes, yep, yep. And I guess our, our intention is, is that, you know, assuming that, you know, we're able to go through the planning and zoning on the 6th, then, you know, that timeline holds that, you know, if we are in a position to break ground, then that we would wait on doing so until the crop is out, out of the field. And I had spoken with Amy about that and I believe she had communicated that to the tenant.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I was looking, kind of going through the documents and there seem to be a lot of contingencies attached to the, to the purchase agreement. And I'm just hoping that all those can fall into place, you know, to make it all happen. I mean, it just almost looks like a domino effect. If one or two missed, then the whole thing falls in a pile. And obviously, we don't want that to happen.
Right. And I guess, you know, from, from our perspective, I guess, you know, some of, some of the things are sort of, you know, timing, you know, have timing considerations. But, I mean, I guess we would certainly, you know, not, I mean, they're, they're not there as, you know, like we're looking for some kind of out or something like that.
Right.
I mean, we would be, you know, looking for, for example, you know, the timing doesn't land quite right with, with say, for example, just A, because that's the, one of the tax abatement contingencies. You know, that we would seek to, you know, basically get a, you know, some kind of, some kind of waiver or, you know, that we would, you know, hold off on closing until, you know, that, that occurred or whatever. Not that it would be like, oh, this didn't happen by the closing date and we're, you know, we're going to, you know, go do a project somewhere else. I mean, that's certainly not, not our intention, you know, at all.
I know you guys like to get out there with a shovel this afternoon and start digging.
Yeah, 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 right.
And one of my other concerns was, and I don't know that it would pertain to this type of development. Is there any kind of a performance bond? I mean, if the city is gonna, you know, spend money to run sewer and water to the property and then things were to fall apart, is there any kind of a performance bond that would be available or issued? Or, you know, anything, Ross? Or is that out of line?
It's in the development agreement that they would, if the project doesn't materialize after we put the infrastructure in, that they would be responsible to reimburse the city.
Okay.
It wouldn't be in the form of performance bond. I don't know that that would even be available to them.
Yeah, and I was just using that as an example, I guess. I don't-
Yeah. It's in the, it's actually in the development agreement appendix there. And the development agreement we would enter into at the closing. It's there as an example now.
Okay.
Okay. So we have the purchase agreement with contingencies. If those are met, then we have the closing. And then we execute the development agreement at the closing.
Okay. All right. I feel better now.
Yeah.
Actually, I think there has been a group of people kind of working closely with Matt and Dennis. And I think trying to make sure, just like you said, Jim, that all these things happen at the right time and we don't have anything that kind of throws us off. So, I mean, we're paying close attention to that with the same concern that you have.
Good.
So I'm working very well with, with Matt and his dad, so.
Yeah, I guess-
There seem to be a lot of pieces that need to fall into place to make it work and-
Right, right. You know, and I guess that's one of the, right. I mean, and I guess that's one of the things, you know, with working with Pat. I mean, we've been, you know, really cognizant of that, you know, as we've been kind of planning out, you know, the different approvals and things like that, like kind of how that sequences, you know, in.
Well, let's get her done and get digging.
Yeah, yeah, I agree.
Any other concerns, questions? If the council wishes, we could take up the resolution right now. If they wish for Councilmember Cowell to be here to weigh in on it, and I think we would probably be proper to have as many of the councilmembers here as possible.
Yeah.
I don't see there's gonna be any problem, but I just think from a number standpoint, it would, it would be better. Is everyone in agreement with that? Just wait, we will take it up then as soon as, you know, as soon as we can work it in after Councilmember Cowell gets back, so.
And if we could ask to have, in the back, there's three documents for signing. So once Adam gets here and they take a vote, if you wouldn't mind, go ahead and sign that.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
All right, at this time, is there any, anyone in the audience that wishes to address the council on any topic whatsoever? Okay? Hearing none, we will move on then to announcements.
First item that we want to share with you is that the farmer's market is continuing. Goes through September 24th from 4:00 to 6:30 PM, being held here at the Community Center West Parking Lot. So a great opportunity for residents to get out and purchase from some local farmers and others who have come up with some different items for sale. Also, we are looking at the Sibley County Enrichment Programs, which is being offered through Sibley County. Basically, individuals will help businesses with two hours of techno, technology help for $10. Please contact Lilian at, Lilian@co.sibley.mn.us. Next announcement, city offices will be closed on Monday, September 3rd in observance of the Labor Day holiday. With that in mind, the regular council meeting will be pushed out to Tuesday, September 4th. A big event for Arlington is the Pro Auto Norridian America Bull Riding Event, which will be on Friday, September 7th, at 7 o'clock, and also on Saturday, September 8th at 6 PM here at the Sibley County Fairgrounds Horse Arena. Sounds like a fun event. Individuals should attend. The cost of tickets is $15 for adults and kids are $5. The Arlington Fire Department's Fall Block Party is scheduled for Saturday, October 6th from 5:00 to midnight. This will include meal and music at the Heritage Building at the Sibley County Fairgrounds. Next item that, under announcements, the Zura Shriners Ho-Ho Area Shrine Club Breakfast will be hosted on Sunday, October 7th from 8:30 in the morning until 12:30 at, here at the Arlington Community Center. Last but not least, we have the Arlington Chamber of Commerce's Bright Night, which will be Wednesday, October 31st from 5:30 to 7:00 at the, on Main Street from Highway 5 to First Avenue. And we have been asked to assist with that. I have spoken with Supervisor Kirby Wentworth and he has agreed to help them in terms of setting up some barricades on Main Street. So those are the announcements for today's agenda.
Any questions on the announcements? Hearing none, we'll move on to communications.
I would like to invite Jennifer Nelson to come up and tell us a little bit about the Southern Minnesota Initiative Foundation and the wonderful projects that they're working on currently.
Yeah.
Thanks for coming, Jennifer.
Thank you for inviting us. I remember many of you from last year, but I think, Pat, you might be the only new one.
See, it's about the same batch of clowns.
It is. I know we talked about childcare last year. I know Dave Kruger is on our Board of Directors. And he, am I short? I have more. He was not able to make it tonight, but just as a quick refresher, we are a regional foundation. We cover 20 counties in Southern Minnesota. McKnight Foundation gave us our start in 1986 due to the farm crisis. And we continue, the six Minnesota Initiative Foundations, and we continue to serve the 20 counties in our three focus areas, our economic development, community vitality, and early childhood development. And I know we talked at length last time about early childhood and the shortage, the childcare shortage. And I know, I think Amy left, but I know she will be at our office tomorrow talking with DHS, who is coming to our office to hear about the programs that we're doing in Southern Minnesota. And we are vying for a grant to help support the childcare shortage in Southern Minnesota. And I know in Sibley County as a whole, there's about a 284, 286 childcare shortage and then 75 just here in Arlington. I know Amy's been doing a lot of work though on that over the last year, so I, I think those numbers have gone down from when First Children's Finance did that study. So we continue to work with First Children's Finance as well as Childcare Aware, Southern Minnesota, Out of Mankato. Those two, we always talk about collaboration. We're a small foundation. We can't do it all, everything ourselves. And so of the $5 million that we invest back into the region each year, we need partners like First Children's Finance. And we often write for grants from Blue Cross Blue Shield, from DHS, MARTA, some of the major players in the state to help support our early childhood programming. So not only do we provide literacy grants to local schools in Sibley County, or public health and home visiting grants to organizations like that, we also provide training. And last year, I think I talked about our quality childcare provider training. I believe last year was held in Gaylord. This year it'll be in Arlington, or I'm sorry, Winthrop on November 18th. So that's coming up. That's just another resource. We try to layer the resources that we have available for, to support the overall early childcare issue in Southern Minnesota. So upcoming, I misspoke, November 5th is our, our Winthrop session for early childcare providers in the county and surrounding counties. We also put on a conference each year. All early childcare providers need continuing ed credits. And so this conference that we host has approximately 400 providers that attend. And they can get up to eight hours and of continuing education credits that they need. So we try to provide all the services that are needed, but there again, we're just one player in this space. And so at our annual luncheon this year, we will be launching a new grant program. We will be working with five communities in the next year. And it'll be a combination of working with First Children's Finance. We'll probably use you guys as a bit of a getting peg because I think Amy's laid a lot of the groundwork here. But we'll be working with five additional communities and bringing in other partners. There'll be grant dollars as well available in that program. So Pat should get an email about that. And I'm hoping that you also receive the information about our Small Cities Grant Program, so under $5,000. And I have an extra copy if you want that. I know Henderson applied last year and did receive a $10,000 grant to do some, I'm gonna have to look it up exactly, because it was Henderson Creative Economy. And they're, it's a two-fold project. They're working on their downtown and asset-based, that's about all I have on here, sorry, but kind of looking at their creative economy and what they can do to support that effort in Henderson. So there were a lot of great ideas, but please feel free to apply for the Small Cities Grant. It closes on August 31st, which doesn't give us a lot of time yet. Economic development is another area that we focus on. We do about 30 loans a year. We have a variety of resources and different lending pools. Not only do we have a lending pool up to $200,000 that can support gap lending with local banks, EDAs and such. We also have small enterprise loan pool up to $35,000 and we offer technical assistance. So even if we're part of a project, we can offer technical assistance. Ron Belts at JIT in Green Isle is a perfect example of that. He is not only a loan client, he's also one of our peer council members. So getting together other regional manufacturers to talk about their business model and what works for them. We have two peer councils as well that are focused on our local food providers or local food entrepreneurs in Southern Minnesota. So just continuing to layer the resources that we have available to help support startup businesses and expansions as well. Our third area, community vitality. A couple examples of that would, well, I did forget to mention the grant. A couple years ago, that helped support Amy's job for economic development. But going back to community vitality, we have currently 28 community foundations that reside under our umbrella. One of our newest ones is down in Wells, Minnesota. We also work up in Sibley County with Winthrop and Henderson, and then La Sure right over the line in La Sure County. So we continue to provide not just one-on-one technical assistance to support those boards. We also offer matching grants to build their endowment funds. And annual matching grant to support one grant that they do each year, up to $3,000. So they can do a $6,000 grant as they work through us. And from time to time, we have other special grants that we provide to our community foundations. And I know Tim Penny, our president, also often does a one-to-one match to help build endowment funds. So if that's something that Arlington is looking at, please reach out. We have quite a bit of information available in and about our community vitality work. Couple things in your packet I just want to have you take note of. Besides the county fact sheet, for every dollar that we raise in Sibley County, we invest $26 back. So thank you for the Arlington, for your contribution. You guys have been a long-time supporter of the foundation. We did ask for a small increase this year. We continue to do, just like every other business, we try to do more with less, but we have a couple new programs coming out and need a little bit of extra support. Also, just wanted to make note of our annual report. It does show on the last page where our expenses, where we spend our dollars and how we raise them. McKnight Foundation is still our largest donor. They give us $1 million each year to help support our overhead and administration. We raise about $450,000 for our endowment funds, and that's from our cities, our counties, banks, businesses, as well as individuals and foundations that support Southern Minnesota Initiative Foundation. As I mentioned earlier, we invest about $5 million back into the region. If I look at just the last couple of years here in Sibley County, it's been about $220,000. And I would say that's pretty split between our economic development work, early childhood work, and community vitality work. Any questions for me about any of the resources that we have available? You guys are our conduit back to your constituents, so I always appreciate coming and being able to share resources and talk about what we're doing. We need partners and our cities and our counties are some of our best partners, not just obviously with financial support, but also with the economic development, the work that we do, early childhood development, and then community vitality. A lot of our projects grow out of the work that the cities are doing and our counties.
Jennifer, just a question. Have you worked with our farmer's market at all?
That came up in conversation last year, so when you were doing announcements. I, I remember our board member Dave Kruger mentioned that they were doing that in Meeker County or somewhere where he works as well. And I think he connected with Amy on, or maybe with Cynthia on how they went about getting theirs launched.
Okay.
I'm trying to think, yeah, there was one other conversation besides the farmer's market that came up to, oh, Dunwoody Training, and I forget with, with what clientele, but some workforce training.
Any questions for Jennifer?
Would you like to see us take advantage of some of that money? Could you just leave us a bag of money and we could-
I wish.
We'll tell you always.
Trust me.
We'll spend it wisely.
We'll give you receipts too.
Yes, there you go. Next year, I hope to see you guys apply and talk to Pat a little more about projects that could fit with a Small Cities Grant Program. We do 10 of those a year, up to $10,000. So for projects that are going on, that are transformational, that are gonna change your community, so it can be in a variety of areas.
I'll just comment for kind of a smaller, local- I'll, I'll just comment for kind of a smaller, uh, local government. For us, it's hard to find time to even fill out. Some of the grants tend to be quite intensive in terms of the information and the monitoring and different things. I, I haven't worked with a Smith Grant, but hopefully that's, you know, maybe a, a little easier to complete and, and.
You might wanna ask Amy about that, I, I, I think it's about a three-page application, and then there's a budget form, and I left that in the car, I just brought the, um, the overview and the guidelines with me today, or with me in here, so. But yeah, it, we intend not for it to be onerous.
Much appreciated.
We, we used to do midterm reports, and I know now we've just gone to annual reporting because it, it can be a, a bit of a hassle. And we do a lot of work in our small towns, um, m- m- more recently, so we launched the Small Cities Grant Program last year, um, really focused on helping to support our communities five thousand and under.
Okay. And just maybe a quick comment, uh, thank you for coming, Jennifer, and I know we've got on the agenda to take a look at, uh, annual allocation. I just found out this afternoon that actually it's the EDA that has, uh, in the past been making, uh, that recommendation, so, um, just leave that up to the council, that, that's what's happened in the past, if that's the route you wish to go this time as well. Uh, I believe it would be good to let the EDA weigh in.
Mm-hmm.
This as well, so.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. If there's any questions, my, um, card is in the packet. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, another annual report, is that Mike Khan?
Next, I'd like to have Mike Khan, Regional Director for, uh, Small Business Development Center, who's kind enough to come and talk with us this evening about their program.
Get that a little bit closer to me. Good evening, council members, my name is Mike Khan, I'm the Regional Director for the South Central Small Business Development Center. A lot of people don't know what the Small Business Development Center is, so to kind of give you just a brief overview, um, we are the conduit for existing small businesses. Of our total client count, about eight, seventy percent are existing businesses, and we work with them as far as everyday challenges. Those challenges can be as far as tough ones, like turnaround strategies, to maybe looking at new markets, maybe diversifying their product line or their service line, or just kind of helping them with such things like business succession type issues as well. The other thirty percent of our, our, uh, portfolio is basically working with people who wanna start businesses, people who maybe have worked for a company and maybe looking at an opportunity to start their own business venture, uh, maybe someone who's, uh, you know, been kicking an idea for a while and get start there from there. So we are across the state, the South Central does serve Arlington and Sibley County as well. For the past two years, uh, we have worked with about, uh, total number of fifteen clients, and have worked with them on about a hundred and ten hours that we provide its service for. Um, and within that packet is a kind of a review as far as what the SBDC does. Uh, we also have a breakdown as far as our economic impact for the region, as you can see on that. You know, one thing that we stress that's important for us, we like to develop those relationships as far as with businesses, because our research so, shows that if they have a relationship with us, um, then they're on a successful track record. They have about a ninety-four percent success rate if they're able to work with us and help them as far as succeeding their business. We are a part of kind of three different entities, we're part, we're hosted by Minnesota State University, Mankato. Um, we also work with the Department of Employment and Economic Development, and also with the Small Business Administration as part of the federal government. So we're just asking your consideration, we do have communities across our region that contribute anywhere between five hundred up to two thousand dollars annually to be a part of our program, and we would appreciate that very much. I'm, I'm also very happy to announce, so we're gonna give this to the, uh, Board of Commissioners next week, but we're also have been able to, uh, obtain a, a USDA, World Business Development, uh, grant that's gonna allow us to do some more business succession activities within Arlington and also Sibley County. So you'll be hearing some more information on that, and that will be coming out here after the first of Oc- first of October. So very happy to get that under wraps, because I know that my, my roots are in rural communities, and I know that, uh, seeing those businesses, uh, you know, continue on for future generations is important to the economy of a local, small community, and that's what we hope to do as part of this grant. So I'll entertain, any questions, Pat? Thank you for the invite. Um, go ahead, if you have any.
Were you working with last year a few business owners in town, if I remember correctly?
I have worked with a few businesses, yep. Yep.
I thought it was you, but I wasn't sure.
Yep, it was me and a, and a few other folks as well.
Mr. Han, is there a, a fee for your services?
Uh, thank you, thank you, council member. Um, no, all our services are provided free of charge, uh, to the business or to the potential entrepreneur as well.
And how much time would you spend with, uh, say, a person wanting to do a startup or buy into a business?
We can spend up to a hundred hours. Uh, if we go beyond that hundred hours, then we have to get the approval of our state office.
Okay. Well, that's two and a half weeks full-time.
Yeah, I would say that on average, especially, you know, depending on, gets into, uh, what the challenge is for the business, you know, I would say that on average, uh, anywhere between fifteen to twenty hours. We have about ten different consultants that work with us, they each have an area of specialization. So, uh, we do everything from, uh, you know, digital marketing to SBA type of, uh, loans, helps secure people to turnaround strategies, to, you know, we just get into various issues as far as guerrilla marketing and management and human resources as well. QuickBooks is huge, you know, everybody, uh, has a passion for their business, but maybe not quite the numbers, so we have to work with them to make sure that they understand QuickBooks and are able to read those financial statements on a monthly basis as well.
What is the biggest challenge for a small business these days? In your mind?
In my mind, in this area, in this region right now, I would say it's workforce. Yep, and then I would say number two is childcare, daycare. Which kind of contributes.
With regards to workforce, uh, is it specific to the business that they're looking for, is, or is it just holding and retaining?
Um, holding and retaining, and, you know, I have some small businesses, I mean, one thing you need to look at, the small businesses that we work with, many of them are family-owned. Once they get to that level of three to five years, they might have three to five family members or employees that work for them. And at least what I'm finding in my experience as far as working with some of the businesses, I've been here about a year, is that some of them are not finding that next level of management, which is preventing them to, to expand. So they're kind of stunted, you know, as far as looking at it from that aspect.
Mike, I know one of the, one of the big, uh, concerns around, in this business community is business succession, as you, uh, alluded to. Is that, is that a concern of, uh, a lot of small towns, or is it, is it concern in larger cities also?
No, it's, 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 well, it's concern, it's more concerning for rural communities than it is for larger cities. Um, you know, one thing that we need to make sure that, uh, we tell the story, and to kind of give you an idea, one of the, one of the programs that we're kind of fashioning, our, uh, Business Succession Program Office, is a program that the University of Kansas is doing called Red Tire, R-E-D-T-I-R-E. And it's really kind of marketing to, uh, you know, people who are alumni of the area, to people who are graduating from local colleges in the area, and making them aware that there are business opportunities, that there are existing business opportunities that are available in these communities. And, you know, and speaking with them, you know, the course, the big deal is, is that sometimes we have to do some compromising, sometimes we have to work together, because, you know, what the seller wants and what the buyer wants, it all has to kind of fit together, and that seems to be where the complicated is, the complication is, but if we can find those folks and at least, um, show them that there is opportunities in rural communities, uh, that's, that's the biggest challenge right there, and then bring them together to the table. That would, that would, uh, it's definitely, it's kind of something that we're looking at doing here yet, uh, this coming year as part of this program.
Any other questions, council members? Is this something also that, um, we might be, I should say, we will be forwarding on to our EDA for their input and, uh, recommendation back to us, so we appreciate your time this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Brandon.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Should we take care of the resolution right now? Okay, at this time, I'm going to interrupt the communications portion of our, uh, meeting as long as Councilmember Cowell is here, and, uh, we did earlier, Councilmember Cowell have a, a brief question-answer, short presentation by, uh, Matt Johnson in regard to the, to the, uh, purchase agreement that was in our packet, and, uh, the council felt at that time that it'd be best to wait until we had as many council members here as possible before we take action on it.
Okay.
So at this point, I guess I'm gonna ask you, uh, in your review of it, did you find anything that you have questions of, of, uh, Mr. Johnson?
Uh, no.
Any concerns? Okay?
Was there any other, anything brought up that, any other concerns?
Hmm, no, I don't think, uh, Councilmember Highland was concerned about the city's involvement in bringing utilities to that parcel, and, and, uh, that was addressed, um, by Attorney Artis, and that there is a clause in there that, that says if, if for some reason N'Kazi does not, uh, follow through with their plans, that then they would reimburse the city for the cost of the utilities. So seems like we're pretty well protected in that area.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions?
Just I have this clear in my head, we're looking to approve the resolution, to approve the. Purchase agreement?
Yes.
Resolution fifty-three, twenty eighteen would be the purchase agreement. Then you mentioned something that it goes back to the planning and zoning? And then what do they do with it? I'm trying to get.
Yep.
The sequence straight in my head before I vote.
Go ahead, Pat, if you.
Basically, notice has to go out, uh, uh, they're looking at, uh, changing the zoning in that area. Currently, it's.
Okay.
Zoned to B1, and in order for this, uh, in order to accommodate this business, we believe it would be more appropriately zoned a, uh, light industrial or I1. So, uh, there's public notification, it'll go to the, uh, Planning Commission, uh, hopefully it'll come out of that then with approval for, uh, for rezoning as well as a conditional use permit, uh, for that business to operate within that zone.
Okay, so they wanted a purchase agreement in hand before they looked at the rezoning?
The Planning Committee wanted a purchase agreement as well as a, uh, uh, specific site plan.
Okay.
Surveyed with elevations with a lot of, uh, information about how the, how they plan to situate themselves on that parcel.
So now we're taking the cart and putting it behind the horse again?
Uh, yes. But if everything goes as, as planned, uh, again, the, the hope is, and that things are aligned so that there could be, on September seventeenth, uh, N'Kazi would be approved to proceed, but then, like they indicated earlier here, they'll probably wait for the crops to be removed before they break ground.
Okay.
So.
All right, I got, I got it in my head now.
There's, there's a lot of moving parts, but, uh, Matt and Dennis have been great to work with, and Amy's helped to.
That makes sense to you.
Counsel has, has talked with the Planning Committee to try and facilitate.
I just didn't wanna be stepping on, doing something, taking a shortcut around the planning and zoning.
Nope, nope, we certainly are not. We went out of our way to make sure that we didn't do that, so.
Does anyone wish to introduce this resolution?
I'll introduce the resolution to approve Resolution fifty-three dash twenty eighteen purchase agreement for PID thirty-one point oh eight eight four point zero 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 with Carabelle Ventures LLC.
Second.
Okay, Councilmember Hattelstadt introduced Resolution fifty-three dash twenty eighteen, it was duly seconded by Councilmember Highland. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call. Councilmember Batchor.
Yes.
Councilmember Hattelstadt.
Yes.
Councilmember Highland?
Yes.
Councilmember Cowell?
Yes.
Resolution passes, four yes votes, no, no votes, and one absent. And did you say there was some signing that needed to be done right now?
Yes, right on the back, on top of the microwave there, and that, that folder contains several copies of the purchase agreement.
Is it the resolution?
Does he have cash?
I'll let you ask this.
I'd say he was gonna say he'll second party postate a check, I don't know.
You get, you get a cup of coffee after the meeting. Your payment's a cup of coffee.
Yeah, yeah.
I noticed, uh, on a reading, this does not belong there. Last four or five lines, the script, description is right there, and then the city parking with that gun right there. That's kind of, that all, it's kind of going away. Some residue that was in the.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
Yep, all right.
Just thank you for bringing that out.
So is there any signing I need to do back here now, or it can be done later?
Yeah, we can do it tomorrow.
Okay.
It's just now.
Okay, yep. Get him on his way. All right, at this time, then we'll jump back into the, uh, communications item we left off after item B, item C.
Uh, provided in your packet is an update from People Services, including some, uh, routine, uh, tasks that they've done the month of June. Uh, also, as shown up on the, uh, screen here is the average daily wastewater pumped, uh, in gallons. It's compared to, uh, what we did the previous year, so as you can see there, in June, our, uh, our numbers are up quite a bit from what they were in, uh, two thousand seventeen. And that is, uh, I believe, a, a direct result of some of the significant rainfalls that we've had. June sixteenth was one problematic date in, in mind that, uh, I think Tim Hagan Miller and a few others, uh, I won't say finally recall, but recall, uh, we had some sewer backup challenges, but, uh, the city has been doing a lot of work lately, working with, uh, Jason Femrite, the city engineer, uh, we have done some smoke testing. Uh, the good news is that in that smoke testing, we had some concerns about a report that was done in two thousand seven, and questioned as to whether or not the city had taken action to follow up on that smoke testing that was done then. Uh, Jason did recently retest some of those areas and did report that, uh, the outcome was different than what was shown in the two thousand seven report, so I'm happy to say that some of those issues were resolved, but there still are some significant issues in that area. We're looking at possibly a cross connection, um, in, and I think Jason will be coming out, actually prior to our next, uh, council meeting, we'll have a workshop beforehand, and we'll talk about how to remedy the problems that, uh, that he discovered when he did the smoke testing. So, um, stay tuned. So stay tuned for, for more on that, but I think there's agreement across the council that that's an important issue that we need to address. So we will have a workshop on the fourth to talk further about that. So. That's the wastewater and then I've got one more chart to show you here, which is the daily water that has been pumped. As you can see there, for June, water level, water pumped is actually down from what it was in two thousand and seventeen, so. Just something to kind of keep an eye on as we're going. Any questions on anything that was included in the packet? Wastewater?
That wastewater just keeps on giving, doesn't it?
It does. So. Moving on from that, we've got the July building permit report. For the month of July, we had five, we had a number, we had a total of nineteen permits that were pulled. Five of those permits were over ten thousand dollars in value. Just to highlight some of those, we have the gazebo which the city is putting in at Memorial Park. Andrew Fardine is doing the construction on that. We have some window installation being done by Richard Larson Builders over in High Island Circle. The city also had a fire alarm installed. Summit Companies installed a new fire alarm here for the community center. We had a commercial roof that's being repaired by Crowells Construction. And then we also had Semstone Products had a, an improvement also, so. Any questions on the July building report? I finally got smart and made a bigger copy of it in order to read it, so.
It is?
Yeah, a little bigger, not much. Moving down to the next item, notification of wellhead protection plan extension. I had rock, I had worked previously on this with Lee Ortloff from People Services, asking for an extension to perform a number of actions, in essence, to protect the wells that we have within the city. And we are continuing to do a lot of public outreach and different things to make people aware of, of the valuable resource that we have in each of those. So we were very fortunate in that we were granted an extension to continue to pursue making those improvements, which given time and giving staff turnover has been challenging at times. So we're very happy to receive that extension. Any questions?
And the extension was to what, to what date or what is the new?
It is actually a ten year extension.
Ten year extension.
For that. The next item, item F is notification from Homeland Security and Emergency Management, again, of being granted an extension for repairs that were related to a flooding incident in two thousand and fourteen. The city of Arlington was awarded grant funds to cover some damage that resulted from that event. To date, a significant amount has already been claimed by submitting receipts. However, there were a number of catch basins which were not completed and were still outstanding. I reached out to Homeland Security and Emergency Management asking for an extension. Since that time, Kirby has had an opportunity to go and view those sites and does acknowledge that they are in need of repair. So what we will be doing over the next couple of months is we'll be going out for bids, getting those repaired, and then submitting those receipts to Homeland Security and Emergency Management for reimbursement. So we have an extension through November thirtieth to get those repaired and receipts in to their agency.
Okay.
Any questions?
You need some signatures. Think you need your signature.
Thank you.
Sign these up and I'm gonna send it with Matt for stand to sign, okay? Alright, moving on to reports, June, July Police Department update, Chief Patterson?
If I could just make one comment before, the reason why we have both the June and July Police Department update is because last time John did provide me with the June police report, however, I did not get it into the packet. So I provided you with a copy of that. Even though John was diligent and went through and explained it, you didn't have it in front of you. So if there are any questions about the June police report, maybe you can bring those up to John now, otherwise he'll jump into July.
No questions?
Any questions from the council on the June report?
So for July, I think we've included a pretty detailed list of everything, just hitting the highlights. Traffic stops, we've got a hundred and nine for the month. Again, we're doing business checks like always. I think one of the big concerns that we, excuse me, I'm getting through a cold here. One of the big concerns that we always are addressing are the ordinance violations for nuisance lawns, vehicles that are being parked in certain areas. I'd like to clarify that particular topic, though. There was some discussion that was brought up this last month about some vehicles that were being parked on lawns. And we had had a discussion as the council has put forward that we'd like to reevaluate the dust-free surface. I just want to assure you all that we have not been writing warnings for any of the dust-free surface parking. Any vehicles that we've been writing have been violation of expired tabs that are some in excess of a year, some of them six months. Some of them have weeds that are growing up around them that are greater than a foot, two feet in height. So if you happen to see any conversations, I guess I would appreciate you passing on that there's a little bit more detail to what we are doing. We photograph each and every one of the warnings that we do. If it moves to a citation, it has been documented multiple times and I guarantee with a few warnings. The city attorney and I have been working very closely on trying to maintain a level of cooperation with the citizens as well as enforcement where we're getting the point across as well. I think we've seen a lot of, a lot of cooperation by the citizens, I would say, but we do have a few that we're still working on. And just to continue with that, one of the things we're pushing forward with yet is the, the trailer park. We've been working very closely with the owner of the property. He has assisted us with some language barriers that we have. He written a letter to each and one of the, each and every one of the residents, new tenants, renters, I guess we would call them, and advised them specifically what the city is looking for and what our ordinance expectations are. So along with that, we included a letter from the police department saying that if we do not have compliance with these yards within, which would be this Friday coming up, we are gonna start issuing citations at the trailer park as well. We do still have a couple trailers that are being worked on and I think again with the, with the strong cooperation that we've been getting with the owner at this point, we're moving towards letting him try and to make some of those improvements to the trailers that are there. And if we're not seeing any progress, Ross and I'll revisit that and then look forward or look ahead to starting that abatement process with some of those trailers that are definitely source. So we should see some more improvement in the trailer parks as well. As far as the rest of the statistics, Vicki was kind enough to put out some neat statistics, I guess, in comparison. In two thousand eighteen, we had three hundred and sixty-nine recorded ICRs. In two thousand seventeen, for the month of July, I mean, there was only a hundred and nine. So granted, last year we only had one, maybe two officers that were working with some help from the county, but we have been showing some activity, I guess, on the department moving forward with making contacts with folks and enforcement. Of a few of those, we had a couple DUIs and James Knoxam has kind of reached out to McLeod County as well and he's looking to try and partner with them a little bit more with their DUI enforcement. So we should be, maybe putting up some more posters and some more support of the DUI enforcement, seatbelt enforcement, the waves that they're doing that you guys may be seeing advertised across, you know, other parts of the state. So it's been kind of fun seeing James reach out to some of these guys too and kind of building some relationships with other agencies, so.
John, did you, McLeod County he's been reaching out to or?
Uh, yeah, with Glenco.
Oh, okay.
Yep, he's got a contact up there that he is, has spoken with, I believe.
How, how about Sibley County, do they?
Right now, we've partnered with, with the Glenco area, McLeod County. And I think, yeah, we've, we've reached out and there's a lot of, I think, things that we'll be working on yet, trying to coordinate some of that. Okay. I think that's pretty much everything for the statistics for the month.
Traffic stops, most of them, a good share of them, Highway five, people coming through on Highway five in one direction or the other?
You would think, but we have been pushing out into some of the, coming in from the county roads, County seventeen, County nine. We had a few activity stops on County nine because of the road closure. We've been trying to help with the county's request that with that road being closed that we minimize the access to it. However, if any of you have been near that road, I'm sure not on it because it's closed, you would notice that there's not been much activity on that road for a, a short while. So we're trying to work with the county whenever they are working to help them minimize that activity.
Okay. Any other questions on the traffic reports?
I noticed there was a traffic study, I think, did you provide that, Chief?
As far as the Highway five?
On Highway five, the,
Oh, sure, yeah, we can move into that.
Anyhow, I was, it was quite interesting, the, the amount of traffic that was going over the speed limit, posted speed limit at the time and the average and some under. One of the things since I've relocated out to a hundred and first avenue, getting on Highway five can be a little on the tricky side. You know, if a car coming from Green Isle into Arlington is doing fifty-five or sixty and you can see it coming around the corner, you can get out and pick up speed and not be in the way. And I'll bet you five out of ten times I look, I don't see a car and by the time I get out on the highway, there's somebody right on my bumper. So I know they're doing more than sixty miles, I see a couple guys shaking their head, they know the same thing. So I don't know if we could, I think the speed limit should be dropped to fifty miles an hour just before that turn. That way, when they get to a hundred and first, they're only doing sixty.
I agree one hundred percent. We had a semi truck come around that curve last winter and he was not loaded with the freight box that he was carrying, cargo box. And the trailer went completely across the road and slid and did a one eighty and ended up partially in the ditch on the other side. I don't know how he didn't kill somebody, didn't even hit another vehicle ironically. But his whole comment was, wow, that came up fast. And I don't know how many bus drivers I've heard say, wow, they came up fast. Or the kids that were crossing the road, that the bus drivers just watched the car come up fast on them as well. So I did reach out to the Department of Transportation and had a conversation with a Scott Thompson and that was just as recently as, well, Friday, the seventeenth of August here. He listened to me gripe for a good half hour, if not forty minutes pushing. And I was trying to be persistent with him to get the point across of everything that I just mentioned and that we've discussed. That speed is way too high. What it came down to is a definition and I told him it's the most ridiculous definition I think I've ever heard. And it's the urban definition of how they determine a speed zone, how it should be set. And this is a very basic explanation as far as in my mind, but if there isn't a business within a hundred feet of each other stacked on a certain section, a quarter mile section of a road, it's no longer considered urban. And I said, well, how do you build buildings on a river, a creekside? And the other part of that property is school field. It's, it's a practice football field on north and south sides of Highway five when you get east of Second Avenue. I said, your definitions are absolutely skewed. You should be looking at that as more of a area that is traveled by kids. They're crossing the street and many different times a day trying to get to and from the General Dollar Store. So our conversation went back and forth, back and forth, and he was not really budgeting a whole lot. I threw out the semi incident that happened, I threw out the complaints for the bus drivers that we've had. And I don't know if it's gonna take a city petition, if that would even cut it, but I did get him to concede to do another study this fall. And I asked him how those end results would really play out into a change. And the big thing was if we saw a decrease in normal traffic pattern, a decrease in speed in normal traffic patterns, that that would slow the, they, they would then look at slowing that, that speed limit down, pushing it out further. But it would be dictated on the majority of the traffic that goes through there through the day. And I thought, how can you let the majority of go-fast people dictate the safety of walking people? That makes no sense. So he, like I said, conceded to doing another study. I promised him that we would have squad cars out there every day slowing down traffic. I asked if it was a, if there was anything that would be legal or illegal about putting a poster up, a billboard on either edge of town at that area that says, you know, the city of Arlington would prefer you drive forty-five miles an hour along this road and put it right in front of the sixty-five mile an hour sign? He laughed and thought that was maybe a great idea. So there was some open conversation, but there was no resolution, the study will be what dictates it. And if we can have any part in slowing those people down, I guess, we'll try to do our part as best we can while the studies, especially while the study's in play. And if they see that as a lower speed, they might consider pushing it out. Otherwise, I'm open for suggestions.
So we need to have Kirk put in the paper that while that study's going on, that all the citizens in town should make it a point to drive through that area at thirty-five miles an hour.
Forty-five would be, would be helpful.
Cause that would then show if we add a decrease in speed, then they made, even if it's a false decrease.
As I said, they're,
Well, sometimes there's more than one way to skin a cat.
Well, their definitions, I thought, needed to be reevaluated, to say the least. There needed to be some. There needed to be some exceptions that are put in there if it's based on school property or if it's based on the undevelopable area, uh, that north side, it's got, there's a creek there. One other thing I did share, which was a conversation that I had heard, uh, through this group, is that if there was ever to be a bike route, uh, that was put, I think I kind of suggested it, along that corridor, that would also be something that would help them consider lowering the traffic, uh, speed in that area because it would obviously increase the amount of traffic crossing that area. So, um, I brought up everything from the new completion of the school and the higher amounts of bus traffic coming and going from intersection of Second Avenue and five. And he heard me, but-
I think we just have the increase of building in the area and the traffic from Hager Miller Lumber going in and out of there.
So it was not for lack of effort, uh, we will get another study that he said he'll be pushing out sometime coming up this, this, uh, fall. He didn't give me a specific date, but I did think that was a, a small win on our part. So we'll see where it goes from there.
We appreciate your, your efforts in that.
One problem, and I don't think it's from the Mankato district, I think it's, uh, State Highway Department policy. They view their roads as primarily regional transportation systems. And they want to promote free flow and speed of traffic. And I think he's actually told me that, you know, years ago. And so that's what we're battling with. You know, uh, their focus is not necessarily local community safety. You'd think it would be, but it isn't. It's, you know, how can people most quickly get from, you know, Eden Prairie to Mankato or whatever? You know, that's what they think their primary job is. So that's what we're fighting against.
When we were trying to get access to our twenty-two acres that is south of the Old Seneca Plant, we wanted to have an access road off of Highway five. And they turned us down because there's a curve in the road and they felt there wasn't enough visibility to have a right turn, left turn lane in that area. And it's not much different than coming in from Green Isle into Arlington, it's almost the same thing.
Anything else, Chief?
So I have on that, uh, another topic that I had, if I could bring up the, um, proposals for the garage, completion of the garage. Uh, I did submit a proposal from Voss Construction. And, um, it was a over-the-phone proposal from Tuckton Hagan Construction, who I believe did the renovating of the police department in the current building that we're in right now. In talking with Tuckton Hagan, he said he did not have the time to do the job. And he was really having a difficult time to complete a estimate. In just some discussion, he went through some things with me and I asked him, would it be all right if I put that on paper? And he did say it would be. And his, uh, pretty much quote was, uh, if somebody can do it right now for fifty-eight hundred bucks, you're far better off than waiting for, uh, him to try and do it for probably the same amount. And he couldn't get up, get to it until next year. Uh, we did put a call in, Kirby got me connected with one of the state bid phone numbers for contractors. So we put a phone call into, or an email, I'm sorry, into that system and I haven't heard anything back from them as well. So I do have the, um, the Voss Construction bid for fifty-eight hundred dollars. That includes the cutting of the opening, the installation of a insulated, uh, door, seven by nine, the finish and trim, and then removal and disposal of the construction debris. Just to point out, when I talked to Voss about the hollow spot under the floor, his, uh, he had no concern with the structure of the floor that was there and the ability to hold a squad car. He's intended that there is not gonna be any larger than typical average-sized vehicles in that stall. And it would be sufficient to handle that, there would be no fill or no other development needed. When I mentioned that, mentioned that to Tuckton Hagan, he said the only reason that he didn't get a chance to do anything further with that at the time of the original construction was because of the obstructions that were in there, you guys would know that.
Generators or something?
Yeah, something. And he said the weight that was on that floor at that time was probably the equivalent of what half a car would be, if, or was probably more than what half a car would be sitting in the center of that floor. So I guess I would, uh, look for some consideration as to whether we could move forward and get that done. Uh, I did do some additional research on our budget. And I guess at this point in time, my spending monthly has been, um, a couple thousand dollars less than what it had been projected. So where we're at with the part-time, um, I did buy the radios and got that at a lesser than cost value. So I, I do believe that I have the money, uh, to do that without any other effect or request for further funds. Pat did mention that if it came into something that was really tight and we had to get it, that there, there might be some wiggle room on some other line items that I have too, so I just throw that back to you.
I do have a question on the bid for the garage door. Uh, I noticed in Tuckton Hagan's comment, he mentions a garage door opener, but in Voss's proposal, there isn't mention of a garage door opener. And in fact, Voss, uh, specifically says no electrical work is in, or all electrical work is excluded, which means if there needs to be outlets for an opener, that would have to be-
Yes.
-wired in.
Yep.
And I think Tuckton Hagan even mentioned about electrical installation of an outlet light switch, including conduit. So that would be over and above Voss's?
Yes, it would be slightly-
But he intends to put in an opener, or is that something we have to do after, after he's done?
You know what, I, what he has on here is what he-
Is what it is.
-intended of on doing. The opener itself, um, a hundred and fifty bucks.
Yeah, not a costly item.
But the electrical work would have to be by a certified electrician.
Right, right.
I'm sure, so.
Okay, so there might be a little bit additional.
Yeah, I do think that there's some close service access to that part of the garage anyways.
Okay, yeah, if that is on the agenda, we can, unless you want us to deal with that now, we'll deal with it as it comes up as far as approving or denying that.
That's fine.
Okay.
That's fine. Um, I did have just a couple other things, I hate to take too much more time. We did, uh, I was tasked, I guess, by Pat to maybe look at some of the city ordinance, um, options. I do have some, um, citizen support behind me on the chicken ordinance as well. I just wanted to mention that I did reach out to Cynthia Strack and she gave me some comparison, uh, city policies from Norwood Young America. I think I got Waconia and a couple other places as well. And we are going to kind of page through those and see if we can get any other chicken owners, um, on board and see if there's any other suggestions or input. Uh, one question that did come up though is if there is a strong opinion from the council that you do not want, uh, or would not want to consider, you know, going any further with this, I certainly would respect that.
We want chickens.
We want chickens. We want a specific amount of chickens and no roosters.
And we could move, we could move forward with more clearly-
I think so, yeah.
Setting something and then we can submit it. Okay, thank you. Um, what else? The city, uh, Arlington night out, I think we strapped, or hit that last time, went very well. That building and that area is now covered with, um, cameras. The system is up and running. Kirby and I had a discussion today about whether we would like to do the shelter and the park. And I think we came up with a solution, uh, where we're going to purchase one more camera. And that is a hundred and fifty dollar purchase. And it already has a plug-in point that we can have a camera looking over the playground area to the north. We're gonna put another camera in the pavilion. And then we will have cameras around the entire side of the building and one inside the building. All we'll have to do is unplug one from that building, from the outside of the building. We have two of them actually watching the pop machine because that's been picked on the worst, I think. So if we pull one from there, the camera will still be there. And we can turn it on, turn it off as we see fit, but we can selectively go from nine cameras instead of just eight. And, uh, we did already have a complaint, Kirby noticed there was some glass that had been, uh, strewn around down there. And we came across some, some dents of some rock throwing of some kids, um, that are fresh on the building. Pat and I are gonna be trying to discuss what we're gonna do with restitution dollar amounts. And we'd like to meet with Ross a little bit about that as well. And see what we can come up with some solutions, but we do have video of the culprits.
Cameras paid for themselves already.
Possibly. So I guess on that note, I think that's it.
Mr. Mayor and Council, I'd like to say that the chief and his department should be heartily complimented on their nuisance enforcement program. It's been by far the most effective I've seen in the forty years I've been city attorney. If you have an idea of some of the houses around town that we considered problem properties, I think if you did a review right now, you'll see a very substantial improvement in most of them. There's always a few that are more difficult. And as I've stated to the council in the past, it's an ongoing, uh, struggle. We're never gonna have a perfect city. What we're trying to do is raise the level, you know, of cleanliness and, and, uh, home care. You always have new people coming into town that don't have the message yet, you have people that backslide. But I think the chief is, is being extremely effective, uh, in this enforcement program.
Thank you.
Thank you for your efforts. Very much appreciated. All right, item nine, Arlington Fire Relief Association, Tim and Spencer Hagen Miller and, uh, Curtis Lane, welcome. And whoever is going to speak, use the microphone there, please.
I'll do my best.
Pass it around.
Yeah, right. Most of you know, or should know by now, that I took over from Curtis as the relief, um, treasurer, I guess it would be. Um, I believe you guys had the F-Form SC-18s, I think you guys got copies they had sent to Pat and if you guys had seen or not. Basically, realistically speaking, the, the, at the end is what we really care about for you guys, part of it. And it's, city's contribution required for this upcoming year is zero again. Um, I know in the past that you guys have done, um, I believe it's a little over a hundred bucks or something like that per active fire member. Um, and I see that that's in here again, so we appreciate that if you guys do that again this year. So, um, basically, that's kind of really all I got. If you got any other questions for us?
And I'm, does everybody qualify for their relief?
I can't actually answer that, that's something you're gonna have to talk to the chief about. And that, if I remember correctly, is not at the end of the year, so. Yeah, that's as far as I'm gonna comment on that one. So I, the only one that I would say to, to s, on that SC-18 is, uh, Mr. John Piotter. Um, it says in there separated, not vested, it's just showing up on there saying so that it's reported to the state that he was off or whatever, and the dollar amounts are zeroed out in the end. So that's, that's really all that I can say is that he's on here, but he's on here to show the state that he's off, so. Yep? And I believe Pat has, you, you have the, uh, increase for next year?
Yeah.
For the, for the benefit level, um, as long as that's in works and we can get that, you know, it, it helps if it's done, you know, for the first of the year, just makes the auditing that we do as the Fire Relief Association goes a little smoother kind of thing. So as long as that's on the docket and gets taken care of, that's all I got.
Yep, we're, we're remiss back in the beginning of the year to get that done, but, uh, yeah, we did find out that that's something. The council approved a certain increase each year. And that was done at one resolution, we thought, and that just simply carried forward. But what we need to do is approve that each year for the subsequent year. So we'll, we'll get in that pattern, I already have that, uh, written on the calendar to ensure that we do that in advance, so. Maybe just a question in terms of number of firefighters, are you able to retain new? Are you maintaining what you've got? Uh, how's that going?
Yeah, we've been pretty much maintaining what we have right now. I have one guy that's interested in joining that just talked to me last weekend. But as far as a lot of that John handles, the fire, because we're, we're two separate groups again, with fire versus relief. And so what John handles all that side, just liked all the requirements. And at the end of the year too, there, you know, that, they, John's making it very, very aware to them at every meeting. Remember the requirements and he does go through them several times during the meeting. So there is nobody that should come back and say, I didn't know, because he's been doing a wonderful job of, and especially those individuals are there, stating it, as he knows to, to make them aware of it, he's been doing a good job. But all the other things have been going very, very well.
Good. Good.
Yes.
Are, are you at a full, whatever your full number is?
No, our, our full is actually, I believe, thirty-one, Curtis? Thirty or thirty-one?
You're at?
We're, uh-
Twenty-six right now.
Yeah, twenty-six.
A little ways to go.
Yeah, but it's a, it's, it's nice, you know, like Gaylord for a while was down to twenty-three, twenty-four. I'm not for sure, Green Isle's down on that little twenties. But, so we're very fortunate, obviously, to be on that higher number side, which is, it, it works. It's been working out good. And mid-Joy, when we needed, like the last few car accidents we've had on county lines and stuff, we've needed lots of manpower, we had a five injured two weeks ago and, you know, that takes quite a crew of people. But it's been working out very well.
Good.
I think with what the city council also had proved earlier, that that's helped retention quite a bit.
Mm-hmm.
I'm, I'm about ninety-five percent sure that there would have been more people retired by now if that one had come along and so it's helped.
I'd say that's a four for sure, hasn't it?
It would have, was a good retention move. I really appreciate the fact that it happened when it happened. And I, I think it's still holding people, just trying to get the new ones in.
And, and getting back to that on the SC-18, you'll see on the very last page too, that there's a dollar amount that basically if, if everybody was to, God forbid, something would happen, have to pay it all out, this is what we'd be able to cover for their pension amounts. And as you see on the front, we're set up at sixteen hundred. It's right around twenty-five hundred with what we have saved. So we're, we're very well covered in that respect, so. Things have done very well. Twenty-seventeen was, was a very good year.
Pat, it's gonna be one of the tabs at the bottom.
Yeah, the, the very, very bottom.
That paid for it.
Thank you, okay.
The bottom number there of twenty-five hundred is if we had to pay out everybody, that's what we'd have to cover, easily cover. There's still room in there to even go higher, but, so, that's, and, yeah. And the interesting thing with that is the money that's in those accounts are specifically set for retirement accounts. So I can't, we can't use it for anything else but that, so.
It's good to see accounts like that.
Yes.
You got a little cushion instead of the other drinks. We need another hundred thousand.
Diving through the records, there's been some interesting years and I've learned a lot this last year, half a year figured out.
Spencer jumped into this thing last year and, and with Curtis's help, and I appreciate Curtis helping, it's really, between Spencer and I and Curtis, we've, we've had a lot of mixed paperwork throughout the states and things that they get done. Actually, quite a few things that they get done and, uh, we've all jumped in and done our share and got it around fixed this, this, the start of this first of the year.
And the state's been very, very helpful and with that, so.
Okay, any other questions, concerns? Thank you very much.
You're doing what you're doing, it's appreciated.
All right, we will then move on to, item ten's been taken care of, move on to, um-
Alright, we will then move on to, item ten's been taken care of, move on to um item number eleven. Proved to deny the request from Subway Quick Shop.
Council members, if you'll reflect back to our previous meeting, we had Wendell Turlinden here asking to waive the water access connection fee of one thousand three hundred and twenty-five dollars. At that time, Wendell talked about the fact that uh he opted not to go with the city water. At that time, he did however, go with the uh city sewer. Uh, because he did go with the city sewer, uh, and needed to get his sewer water over to a different location, he ended up having to pay additional money for a pump. And since that time, he's had to replace that pump several times in the process, estimating that he spent over five thousand dollars. So, with that said, what he is asking, uh, as he now looks at uh connecting up to water, he's asking that the ci- city consider waiving that uh water access fee of one thousand three hundred and twenty-five dollars. The last time we met, the council asked to look into several things. They asked to look into when it was that we initiated that water access connection fee. Uh, looking back in the records, Vicki was able to find that we did that in two thousand and fourteen. Uh, prior to that, it was referred to as a hookup charge. And then in two thousand and fourteen became the water access connection fee and was set at one thousand three hundred and twenty-five dollars. The date that Quick Shop probably had the option to connect uh with water was in two thousand and two. And at that time, it, we believe the fee was about eleven, eleven hundred, one thousand one hundred at that time. However, at that time, he did not elect to connect up to uh city water. So, uh, in talking with some other individuals in that neighborhood, they did have to pay that water access connection fee. And um, I think that we would be creating a precedent that would be difficult to deal with in the future if we were to go ahead and at this time waive that for Quick Shop. Even though they have spent money previously to keep their uh sewer in operation, which maybe some of their neighbors haven't had to do because of being in a different location. So.
The one comment on that is, I mean, when he was here, he said that they chose to do that because they liked the well water better than the city water for, for their pot machine or whatever it was.
The fountain pop.
Fountain pop, and so they chose then to do that. And the other thing that he, he mentioned was that he was told um that later on, if you wanted to hook up, there'd be no charge. And I guess I don't see anything that, that says that either, so.
The concern I had when he said with the fountain pop, how did he know that their well water was better than the city water?
Right.
When he's never had city water in that business for pump pop? If you've never been up to city, hooked up to city water, how do you know the well water's better? I mean, that, that whole story didn't fly.
In, in my conversation with uh Wendell, he said that it was the public. The public was telling him that they preferred the uh well water over the city water because the city water was at that time working with fluoride. And uh, he said that uh when they had to do that, go through that fluoride process, you would taste it in the water. Since then, he says, you know, certainly the city has probably significantly improved. But back in those days, he said that it was something that residents preferred not to be on city water for that reason.
I agree with what you said in regards to when the project was done and the other residents or businesses paid and Quick Shop decided not to go that route. And now fifteen years later, we decide that we're gonna let them slide and not pay. And I don't, I don't think it's fair.
You know, the letters that were in the packet, I didn't see anything pertaining to cost of the hookup for the water. In the ordinance, ordinance two sixty-one or in the letter that was dated six-six of two thousand and twelve, that talked about if the well didn't pass testing or if the property was sold, it would have to be hooked up. Or if the well was no longer functioning, then it, they had to hook up and could not drill another well. I didn't see anything on costs and maybe that's uh someplace else in the ordinance or in the fees or.
He said it was like eleven something, Pat?
Eleven hundred.
Yeah, back in two thousand and, prior to being adjusted in two thousand and four, we have reason to believe that the cost was one thousand one hundred.
Sure.
Back then, but that was back then, at which time you would have had the option to go ahead and.
So, when he hooked up, when Quick Stop hooked up the city sewer, they had to pay an access charge at that point, I would?
I would assume so.
I would assume they did, as did the other property owners that hooked up to that same line.
If they were paying to hook up to water, I would assume that, I don't know, but I would assume there was then also a sewer access charge.
And I'm sure what, if, whether they did or they didn't, I'm sure they did the same as ever. Nobody else in the area.
Isn't this fee, correct me if I'm wrong, and I surely could be, we charge those access fees to really cover our costs for the water tower, the treatment plant and everything. Doesn't that help pay for that?
Infrastructure that's there.
All the residents are helping pay for the infrastructure of the community.
A buy-in.
A buy-in.
It's a buy-in, it's not based on usage, it's based on a buy-in.
A buy-in toward that.
To the system.
Yeah, that, that's.
Yep.
Um, I guess I got a question for Ross, so um, were there, I mean, I know in the past, there's always been gentleman agreements, a handshake and a unwritten agreement. Was that um common, like when this, when this would have took place fifteen years ago yet? Or had things been uh written down?
I would say uh, you know, any kind of agreement like that would have been unusual. And there, and there should have been something in some minutes somewhere about it. You know, there could have been an offhand comment, you know, by a mayor to Mr. Turlinden. But, you know, if they can't find anything in the minutes about it, obviously, there's no official approval of that agreement.
Isn't there something too that, that a previous governing body cannot bind uh their successors to?
Right.
Verbal?
Right, each city council can set policy.
Right.
That policy doesn't have to be the same as that of a previous council.
And, and I think that's why maybe I included those uh letters from two thousand and twelve and two thousand and fourteen. If you as a business owner had some sort of an agreement and received a letter, although it didn't state price, but it certainly didn't state that there would be no price. You know, if I received a letter saying you have to connect up and I would say, okay, I just wanna remind you that we had this prior agreement that there would be no cost just to make sure that time doesn't pass and you get to the point where we, where we are today, where we're questioning. Uh, I think he's questioning, but nobody has any uh proof or anything to verify that that agreement was made back in the day.
Yeah.
So.
I have to agree with Pat, I mean, it's, not that we'd like to help, help the businesses out. I'm afraid if we do this for one, this is gonna have a domino snowball effect in the future.
Well, not only that, I mean, I couldn't see the businesses that did pay back then to get hooked up could come and ask for reimbursement.
Sure.
Yeah. Motion, anyone?
I'll make a motion to deny requests from Subway Quick Shop to waive water access connection fee of thirteen twenty-five.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion by Councilmember Cowell, second by Councilmember Hattlested to deny the request from Subway Quick Shop to waive water access connection fee of one thousand three hundred and twenty-five dollars. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
If it was no, motion carried. Alright, moving on to uh new business, item twelve. On this regard to the small business development request for twenty nineteen for next year's budget in the amount of a thousand dollars, I think, is that what we paid this year? I believe it is.
Five hundred, I believe.
Did we pay five hundred?
Actually, actually, we did not contribute uh anything to the Small Business Development Center in two thousand and eighteen.
Okay, this is a small business development.
I'd like to make a motion to table this until it gets a, a approval or a recommendation from the EBA.
You're right, you're right, both of you should be tabled.
Second.
I would agree with that too.
Motion by Batch, or second by Cowell to table, can we throw together item thirteen and that also?
Uh, can we? Or does it have to be separate?
Sure. Yeah, yeah, both items.
I'll amend that.
Yeah, second that too.
I'll amend that.
Motion by Councilmember Batch, or second by Councilmember Cowell to table the um, south, uh, south central regional small business development center request and also the Southern Minnesota Initiative Foundation request. Table that pending uh recommendation or input from the Economic Development Authority. Any further comments? If not, uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
If it was no, motion carried.
Okay, I'll be right back.
Okay. Kirby, you're next, you can go up and sit in the hot seat. As soon as Jim gets back.
Push you out to the end tonight, Kirby.
It's not that late.
It's hot down. All the kids are in bed by now, right Kirby?
Yeah. Nope, this is my escape. That's on, that's on record, isn't it?
Yeah, it is. Played a bath before he came.
You can channel it at home? Luckily, we don't.
There are a lot of fights in here, right there.
There are. I should bring my daughter's plant and she has a Venus flytrap.
Oh, it'd be fun watching, right?
Well, I don't think they reach for it like they do in the movies, but you can feed them.
So, does she feed it bugs?
Yeah, yeah.
Really?
Yeah, it's interesting. They close, it's like a, I don't know, to me, it looks like an eye, because it looks like there's eyelashes on the end. And then um you take like a blocking and it closes.
And it digest, it actually, that's a digestive process.
It actually closes, yeah, it closes and then it opens and it's gone.
The layer is really gradual.
Gradual, I mean, it's kinda, it's not fast.
Okay.
Okay, item fourteen, impervious to deny award of the twenty eighteen street improvement project at OMG. That'd be for two or three locations here.
We did receive uh word from uh Jason Femerite, uh, ci- city engineer, that the bids did come back regarding the work on Second Avenue, uh, which we did approach the school district, asking, or Sibley East, approaching, approached them, asking for assistance and uh covering that funding. They did some patchwork, which they felt was adequate to take care of the damage that resulted from their construction. However, the road still is in need of overall repair. And then Kirby has identified several additional areas, which I'll let Kirby talk about, uh, that will be included in that quote, so.
Yeah, uh, the one was uh an alleyway, the paved alley behind Jerry's Grocery Store that is horribly falling apart. And uh, riding around with Millers earlier, I asked him if it's worth trying to patch that. And it's, it's, where it's falling apart in several places, it's so deep, it's not worth trying to patch. It, we're better off just milling it up and, and overlaying it. And the other one was a stretch over by Shamrock over here, where it's the same thing, it needs to be edge milled really badly. The road is, how do I wanna put it, it's really uh kinda caving in on itself. So, that's on there too, it's a, I think, what do we put it as, a hundred foot stretch or something like that? Where, I mean, the trip hazard, where people park there and get out of their cars, uh, significant trip hazards there.
Can you describe where that is?
Um, well.
Like in front of whose house or?
If you go on, it's Shamrock, I think the apartment numbers are one oh nine, one oh five. Somewhere over, over there, the east of the Greenery Center.
West of me?
West of where you live, yeah. Yeah, there's, there's a couple inch drop where the curb is.
I thought it was down, yeah.
So, I threw that on there, I, I, it's, it's something that has to be repaired, whether we edge mill it when they're hot patching or whether we throw it in on this, it's gotta be done. Because our, the blades on the, on the snowplows could rip up curb and do a lot more damage if we don't probably take care of that.
There's some bad spots.
And there's, granted, bad spots around town that we're gonna hot patch yet, but this, this, this definitely needs attention too. And then the other residential alley between Clinton and Baker, East Clinton and Baker, uh, first and second avenue southeast. That's an alleyway that, from what I know, the residents paid, they have that paved, but the city is in charge of maintaining it. And it's at the point where it's dilapidating and falling apart and again, not worth trying to patch. There's bad heaving in it. It's to the point that snow, our snowplows are gonna have trouble with it, either catching really bad and hurting our snowplows or ripping up the road even worse. So, I threw that in there, hoping to get that done, being that we are not, again, going back to uh not doing the Seal Coat Project this year. That there'd be a little extra funds to get some of these other things that need attention done, that are out of the unusual, you know, the usual. I don't think that alley's been repaired for probably a long, long time.
Probably since it's been put in.
Probably since it's been put in, yeah. And I mean, we maintain all our other alleys several times a year, grading them and it just seems like this would be a good time to try to get that one done too.
The alley by Jerry's Foods, where does that drain to? I mean, is that, is that like the other alleys uh on Main, north of Main Street? Is it slopes or that?
It seems to meet a slope to the east.
Okay.
So, it comes down and then it takes a turn and.
But it isn't, it isn't lower in the middle like the other concrete alleys.
Oh, like that, yeah, it's concave.
It is?
Yep.
Oh, okay.
Or it's supposed to be.
And then east.
It's supposed to be, but, yeah.
I know the transition from that alley down to the street is really bad too, hopefully that'll get fixed to uh whatever.
The concrete paper in there?
Worst ever. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Does the city pay a hundred percent for alleys to be upkept?
I think so, without checking the ordinance, I, I think so. I think they're considering public rights away.
There's that difference again between making an improvement or making or doing maintenance.
Yeah, if it's an improvement, then, then there's an assessment.
Yeah, if it's an improvement, then, then there's an assessment.
Assessment.
Yeah, but if it's, uh, repairing an existing, I think that's all city cost.
Yeah, so in other words, with that one, that's been blacktop. If the city would come in and do concrete, that would be an excess, that would be an improvement, definitely putting a better surface on it.
So, the one by, um, Jerry's Food, is that gonna be concrete?
No.
That'd be blacktop again.
That, well, it's.
Yes, well.
It's blacktop now.
Yep.
No, it isn't, uh-uh.
No.
They quit with the concrete on the block behind Mauryan's.
It's asphalt, yeah, yep.
Yeah.
Up, as you go to the west uptown, then those start to become concrete.
Yep. I'm guessing when that concrete was put in, Jerry's was not there yet. That was still Guy Jenny Lumber, so they maybe thought, you know, there wasn't a lot of, I don't know. Lot of car traffic for sure, not there.
Was there even an alley there?
Maybe there wasn't.
I think that, uh, for Jerry's is that was, wasn't that the lumberyards, uh, storage area?
Yeah, you're right. But you had to cross over the, there was an alley, you had to cross the alley to get to the storage. Yeah.
I, I did talk with, uh, Jason Femright about the numbers, uh, I did pose the question to him about, you know, would project costs be less if we were waiting until spring? Uh, he felt that it was within reason and that we should proceed with, uh, uh, moving ahead, so. You know, you try and play the market, sometimes you win, sometimes you lose, you try and play the the asphalt market, the same happens, we don't know what the, the increase in material costs will be uh, in the spring.
Well, then how worse the roads are gonna be at that point, because a lot of them, there's huge potholes.
Well, I, that, that Second Avenue, I mean, if you look at it, when school starts, there's gonna be people parked on a lot of those areas and both sides of the street, you got potholes and there're people gonna drive around and miss them, there's kids walking across the street. I know personally of one resident that all he does is knocks earpins out of his snow blower because there's chunks of concrete by his driveway. And boy, I heard about it last year, and I said, well, the city's working on it. I didn't know how to vote on this, I was kinda leaning to say yes. I went and talked to five residents in Arlington, three of them business owners, two of them citizens. I explained this situation to them, and I said, how would you want me to vote on this? They said, repair it now. I said, with the understanding, of course, maybe this would be a little less next spring when they aren't as busy. And of course, their comeback was, well, how about if it's more money? And in turn, we got a terrible street that probably isn't all that safe.
Well, just go like Kirby said, if we don't fix it, he started gouging things out and.
Now you're gonna bust up the plow?
Breaking the plows.
It's not gonna get any better.
No, no, they don't fix themselves.
Well, just one question, I know we limited it to parking your own school, if we do this, I'm sure it's not gonna be done in the next two weeks. I mean, are we gonna, we relax those restrictions for a short time, or? Because there's gotta, they gotta be able to park somewhere, can they park on the side streets, or?
Didn't they say, what was, I thought their deal where they could do that mill and overlay in a day and a half?
No.
So, maybe during M E A, we could have them do that, where the school is out, then it would affect nobody.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, that's not one option, if it works for the contractor, of course.
Right.
You know, and maybe for two days, they gotta park a block away.
I think there's always additional parking in that, uh, lot over by the bowling alley, too. I don't think that's ever filled up, is it?
It wasn't last year.
I'm not sure if the school's using that or not this year, I have no idea.
Or with the fraud being done?
Yeah, I, yeah, I'm not sure, but, um, but my other point to, you know, if you lax or ease up on the restrictions of parking, even if it's a day or two.
Right.
Kids tend to then get into a habit and then.
So, they just gotta park farther away for a couple days.
It's two days, they gotta go a block and a half further.
Yeah.
If that's how quick it is, it shouldn't be a big deal.
Yeah, no, it is fairly quick.
I just don't know if we can let it go.
And the money's there in the budget, because it's, I, from what I remember, our budget for, um, the seal coating is about eighty thousand, right?
Hmm, I think so. That does sound familiar, yes.
Yeah, and, and this is substantially higher, so I was just wondering if you save money other places to cover. Not, not saying that this not, doesn't have to be done, but is there money in your budget yet to cover? Um, I think that next, or the small, uh, the bid that was the cheapest was what, a hundred and forty thousand?
Hundred and forty.
Yeah. So, that's almost doubling your, almost doubling your.
I guess in all the talks up to this point, I was under the impression we were okay. On the streets meeting, we, when we were talking about it, and then even between now and that, meeting with Pat.
I believe our capital improvement spending has been down quite a bit. Uh, some of the items that were on the capital improvement plan, right, it was that Tony had put on there. You know, the vacuum truck, I think, was one. Um, so I think what we have funded for two thousand and eighteen, you know, there's gonna be additional money available there. So, I think that this is something that could be funded.
One of the questions I have, why is there such a discrepancy from the engineer's estimate to the O M G Midwest and William Mueller and Sons?
And I, I did ask that question of, of Jason primarily asking him how come there's such a difference between the estimate and what O M G, uh, bid? And, uh, and Jason said that they're trying to hit the number, but, you know, they're, they're seeing things all over the board, you know, uh, it's just really tough.
Like taking twenty percent is, you know, wiggle room? But, and that's probably what that is, the lower number, the other number, I don't know, um.
Could be, yeah, could be.
Twenty percent, you know, wiggle rumor or whatever, I guess I can see, and I think that's where O M G came in, it's more twenty percent above. I don't like to see that either.
I'm wondering.
This time of year, you know, it could be about, you know, demand and such to other times, so.
I think sometimes contractors put in courtesy bids, too, and I wonder if Miller just put in a, a bid knowing that, hey, we don't have time to do it, but we'll throw the bid in and.
That's what I thought.
Yeah. Cause they usually aren't that far out of the ballgame.
I'll make a motion to, uh, if we're there, to approve, um, uh, awarding, uh, O M G Midwest with the, uh, the street improvements.
I'll second it.
Oh. Motion by Councilmember Batch, or second by Councilmember Hattlested to award, or to approve the awarding of the two thousand eighteen street improvement project as listed to O M G Midwest. Additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion is passed. Item fifteen, approve or deny adding the overhead garage door to police department back room, uh, as per the bid from Voss Construction, cost of fifty-eight hundred dollars. Chief is here, if we do have some questions that.
We touched on this earlier, I think it's gonna be, um, beneficial to the police department to throw this in. Um, it's gonna be helpful and handy in so many different ways, we need more garage space for the, for the as well.
One question I had, is that space heated separately, or is there any kind of heat in it at all?
It's not heated at this time.
Okay. Okay.
Tom and I were just talking about, could you put a, like, what would it, ceiling hanging, electric?
Could be electric, yep.
Pretty cheap.
Yeah, the heaters are very inexpensive.
They're expensive to run though.
The existing run that's there from the other side of the building.
If they can get through that block wall from the other side, they could just extend that heating duct.
The heating.
Put it in the other side of the wall, put a register up, and you're done.
You got hot air.
It doesn't matter if it's seventy in there, because if it's fifty, it's gonna melt squad car off.
If John wanted to keep cash in there, or whatever, or if there was stuff that he stored in there, it's not going to freeze. So, yeah, I don't, I don't think that the heating end of it is gonna be that big of a deal.
Well, I just, just keep it from freezing, I guess, would probably be an ideal situation. Yep.
Squad's in there, and they gotta get out and hurry up and go, they don't have to go outside scrape the windows clean the snow off, the squad's ready, and we got the storage space there.
Yep.
And just an, another comment, uh, from the fire department, uh, perspective. John Zaski did talk to me, and there've been a few occasions lately where, uh, they've had to contact John and ask John to move the vehicle so that they could get some equipment needed for an emergency out, so.
Yeah, there's a.
That was brought to my attention.
There's a big light tower, I think, that's right there that, uh, county is shared with, I think, too, he brought this up at the last fire meeting. And I know if they have access to that, and if, if, uh, they don't have any way to get a hold of them, they're gonna get that out of there, cause they need it, and that's for disaster, emergency type stuff. Um, so, yeah, it would be definitely beneficial for them.
That'd help them, help police department, help, help everybody.
Okay, anyone wish to make the motion?
I make a motion that we approve the adding overhead door, garage door to the police department back room to allow for indoor storage of squad cars at a cost of fifty-eight hundred dollars to, to Voss Construction.
I'll second that.
Can I just make a comment, a- as we talked about, there may be some electrical expenses associated with that, do you wanna raise that dollar amount? A certain amount to allow for some electrical that may be associated with it.
Is there an outlet in that room? Do you know that we could run conduit closer to plug that in? I don't know that that would have to be on a breaker all by itself.
No, I think there is, I don't think there's one that's live right now.
Okay.
There are some empty conduits that come from the other side.
Yeah, when you go through that door, there's gotta be an end to, end to this, what do I call it, squad room or whatever? There's electrical, so they just have to run a piece of conduit.
You're, you're able, you're able to approve the electrical.
How about if I add my, uh?
I don't, I don't think we need to, we're accepting the, the bid from Voss. And any additional for electrical, Pat has the authority to approve that.
Yeah, that's, that's like thirty-five hundred or something, right? I mean, if, not that it's gonna be more than that, but he has the ability to.
I was thinking maybe if I was.
No, right.
Yeah, I don't think it'd lead to that much.
No, it doesn't.
Okay, so I leave, um, motion at the fifty-eight hundred dollars.
Okay, so we're approving the, uh, bid from Voss Construction for a cost of fifty-eight hundred dollars for that garage door and any further discussion? Uh, motion was by Highland, second by Hattlested, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carried. And then, uh, item sixteen, approve or deny crack ceiling, citywide, uh, for ninety-nine hundred dollars from Allied Blacktop Company. This is.
Kirby, do you wanna step up?
This, my understanding is this is crack ceiling only?
Yes, crack ceiling.
And we've got a little map, was it just?
Is the map on there?
Yep.
Okay.
So, be there. The red.
So, this, this is just, I guess, part of our routine yearly crack seal. Uh, and this is the sections we're doing this here. This is pretty much, pretty usual for what we spend?
I don't know. First time through.
Everything in red, right?
Everything is red, yeah.
All right.
I was advised by Jason Femright, city engineer, to get bids for ten thousand linear feet. He has that, I guess, off, you know, from what we've done in the past, for each section, how we've bid it out. If you see sections like behind the hospital there that stop suddenly and then pick back up later on down the road, that's where the road is too alligator cracked to even attempt to crack seal without busting everything up. So, we actually did a ride around to figure out, you know, what was worthy of, of crack sealing or not.
So, after you ride around with Jason to look at what is, what's needed as far as crack sealing, then he takes back and figure, takes it back to his office and figures out it would be approximately ten thousand feet.
Right.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve crack ceiling citywide, um, in the area that's described on the map for ninety-nine, uh, nine thousand nine hundred dollars from Allied Blacktop.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Batch, or second by Councilmember Cowell to approve the crack ceiling citywide for ninety-nine hundred dollars from Allied Blacktop Company. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carry.
Just clarifying, I know I've hit you a dozen times with this, Kirby, that'll include doing some other minor, minor things like, uh, Mr. Rugu, we talked a little bit about his issues.
Not, not in the crack seal.
Oh, that's a different.
I'll probably try to take care, like, that specific, what you're talking about when we do some mudjacking. When we're raising slabs, uh, a couple spots where curbs or sidewalks are sinking, or, you know, we can have them hit up spots like that, too, and mudjack them and level them out.
Okay.
Or water stands, or where there's trip hazards.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, we, we combine a little more of that stuff, we get a better, should get a better rate for that.
And you, you believe we'll be doing that this fall?
Oh, yeah, yep.
Sounds good.
Yep. You mentioned about sidewalks, trip hazards, I know, uh, Councilmember Hattlested had indicated to me at least, I'm not sure if he shared it with everyone, about a citizen that had mentioned to him about a sidewalk that was heaving, and I looked at it, and it is, I mean, it's, he, he showed me this two or three years ago, and it's even worse now. Uh, also, I know there's one across from St. Paul's Church, it's probably about that much. And it isn't that there's roots heaving, it's just that one, one section of sidewalk must have sunk.
Oh.
So, I don't know if that's something that can be jacked, or?
Probably. I'm gonna be doing an extensive little tour of town to get this put together.
But I think.
And I have some already written down, some that would.
Yeah, I think the thing that.
Concerns that I've had.
The thing that is, and I think maybe I talked to you about this, Kirby, is when someone wants their sidewalk fixed because it's a trip hazard, and we agree it is a trip hazard, they, and usually it's caused by roots from trees. They typically are not gonna also get the, the sidewalk fixed, they're gonna lose a tree.
Lose a tree, yeah.
Because you cannot put a sidewalk down unless you cut those roots off.
Right.
And generally, you cut the roots off, and a few years later, the tree is dead.
Right, yeah.
It's best just to.
You almost better take the tree out right away.
Grind the stump, get the sidewalk down, plant new trees.
Majority of people that I've talked to with that issue.
And they're okay with that.
Take the tree, yeah, they're sick of it anyways.
Contacted me, I explained that this tree's, I said, you cut a root, it's gonna die, I advise you remove it.
You might as well remove it right away.
All I want is my sidewalk fixed.
Yeah.
I don't, cause he said it's a pain to blow the snow with it, cause my snow's catching on, it's ripping my pads. In fact, I think he has a tree coming to his yard this year, a new one. I thought, I almost told you, he got on that list for trees to put one on the other side of the sidewalk in his yard.
Oh, that's what, that wouldn't be boulevard, that wouldn't be boulevard anymore.
Oh, does it have to be on a boulevard? Well, maybe, uh, maybe he's getting it from somebody else.
Yeah.
That'd be a.
So, speaking of trees and what about tree trimming, has that been, um, kept up to date, like, do people request tree trimming? I know it's been in our newsletter and stuff. Have you been?
If people are requesting it.
Yep.
We try our best. Yeah. Yep.
And then ordering trees, is, when's the timeline or the time to do that?
Uh, we're taking down, every day, it just seems like we get another tree order. Uh, I don't, I don't know when we're gonna, we gotta decide on a date.
We gotta say that on a date.
It's gonna be in October.
For planting, yeah.
Um, yeah, that's all coming up pretty quick, I'll have to just make a cutoff and order trees shortly, so. I guess, I don't know, did we ever establish a cutoff date for that?
Un- unfortunately, that was something that we had Shannon working on, and, uh, now with her departure, I guess I'm not sure exactly where it's at, I think she was.
I can certainly give you a hand, you know, with trying to organize that thing, but the trees that you'd order for fall planting now, would they be bare root trees also?
Nope, they'll have to be container trees.
Really?
Yeah, they don't do bare root. Yeah, they don't do bare root in the fall.
In fall, okay, okay.
Yep.
But you do have some in the gravel bit?
Yeah, what do we have, forty, forty-five trees maybe, something like that?
Okay, no, that'll do, good chunk.
Yep, yeah, yeah, we do have quite a bit, yeah.
Yeah.
But, we, yeah, we're good up there in numbers.
If I understand correctly, I think that, uh, the benefit is that you had somebody who was able to come in and dig the holes in advance for you.
Yep.
Um, so if you're doing the, those trees, it'll, it'll be a lot easier than.
In some regards, yeah. We'll have to struggle with root balls and cutting those apart, but.
Okay.
We'll need to get ahold of those people soon and get a date from them as to when they can come, come out.
Yeah, and we're, we're at, currently, just today in the works, uh, with some emails back and forth with, uh, group. Trying to get organized, uh, as to what the best day will, will be for them and us, so.
Okay. Okay.
You know, speaking of trees, um, not that I'm trying to promote the business or anything, but Conti Brothers and Playo are having their semi-annual tree auction September eighth, I think it's a Saturday after Labor Day. You know, someone wanted a goodbye on trees, there's some goodbyes on trees.
Okay.
Big trees, little trees, so it's.
Okay, nah, it's good as well.
Something to keep in mind.
For sure.
Yeah.
Do you have a trailer that you could transport them with?
Probably.
Yeah, yeah, we got a trailer.
Jim does too.
City has a big trailer.
Mm-hmm, yep. Yep.
Okay, um, committee updates, are there any?
Budget stuff.
Budget, yeah, pretty much budget, quick, not quick, but one agenda item, budget committee meetings. Okay. Anything under open discussion?
Um, I'd like to bring up a topic about speeds around parks and schools. If we would ever think about considering reducing speeds around the schools in the community and or the parks?
Didn't John, you suggested around the schools last year, we, or this, since you've been here, reduce those speeds, if I remember correctly?
I think we had a conversation about, about it while we were talking about the signage.
Yes.
I don't know that it ever went any further.
No, but we talked about like reducing it to twenty or something.
It was brought up.
Yeah, I thought so.
I mean, I, I know around the parks as well, I mean, there's a lot of kids that are playing and stuff, stuff like that and, um, you know, just to slow people down so that, I mean, kids start out all the time. And it's, and it's a safety thing and, you know, around the schools too, we have a couple of schools in town. I, I just think that it would be a, a nice thing for us to visit, to see if we can come up with a plan or something.
Well, a lot of the, around a lot of the schools are, they have speed limit twenty miles an hour when children are present.
Yeah. A- and, and then, you know, to extend that to parks, I mean, you know, I, you know, at least that's business hours, right, when children are present, maybe, or you know, after, after school activities, evening activities or whatever too, but, um, as far as parks and stuff like that, you're usually getting the younger kids even more so there than, than at the schools, so.
Well, I know during, during the weekdays, when I, if I'm driving around town and school's in session, you see a lot of traffic, pedestrian traffic. Kids going from school to Four Seasons Park and back. Because that's their playground now.
Right.
You know, sixth graders, seventh graders, whatever, I, but, uh.
I think, um, by a class is, we could use as, as what happens, there's really no resource anymore.
By a classes, yeah. There's a lot of back and forth.
Um, yeah. But, but, I mean, I do have to say, I mean, if, and even in some of those, you know, walkway zones, I mean, I think they're well marked, which is good. But, I mean, just reducing the speed around those, the school expect, the schools especially.
Would we need to do an ordinance or a resolution? What would we need, Mr. Attorney? You know, I, I think the city, uh, has the authority to, um, if it's a s- strictly a city street, not a county or a state aid highway, uh, the city has the authority to set those speed limits, um, just, just by a motion.
Designate the, the area or the street or.
Yeah, and it was been brought up by my neighbor before too.
Yes, yeah, I do remember that.
Yeah. I mean, I mean, I just feel like, I know we talked about it at one point and I, with school starting, you know, summer ending, school starting, whatever. I mean, no time's a better time to try and get something done on this.
Right. Yeah, it would be good.
I mean, we can come up with a plan or come up with, I don't know if the streets committee wants to look at it.
I was gonna say for the streets committee and maybe with input of chief to.
But that, that's why I was gonna ask Chief, or would we be better off to reduce it to, let's say the number was twenty? And post it, speed limit twenty versus speed limit twenty when children are present? How do you please the when children are present versus it's twenty miles an hour?
But my.
Trying to eliminate that problem of, I didn't see anybody around here.
You know, it's on, they had just the school, designate schools open twenty miles an hour.
Yeah.
And majority of those areas were like the bus loading and unloading, period pickup, drop off. The main trapal areas where there'd be foot traffic. Um, but I think you just set twenty mile an hour school zone.
Right.
And it didn't, I suppose like the parking, you could do it, you know, during school hours. You know, I think you're gonna end up putting people in a position where I can speed now, but I can't.
Yeah, that, that's pretty much, I think better all the time. That's kinda what I was thinking, that's why I asked, just, it's twenty mile an hour, that's a.
Yeah, school zone.
But that we could do in a street committee.
I think so.
Yeah.
Just sit down with a map and decide which streets you wanna.
Yep. Bring it back to the council, maybe we wanna add something.
Does it look, and we can. Or take away something or whatever, so.
You could look at the parks too, just not the school zone.
Yep.
Yep, yeah, parks, yeah.
I would agree, I think it's a good idea.
That would be awesome.
Well, I believe Saint Paul's, don't they? They walk, they go to friend zones, don't they?
Yeah, they do, and, and, you know, they, we put the crossing signs up, you know, by Saint Paul's and stuff.
Mm-hmm.
The flashing lights there, so I think that's a nice step too, and there's nothing we can do on Highway five, but, um, the streets that we can do something on.
Yeah.
To add to the safety would be great.
We can do, we, we can do it to the majority of the streets, like said, the highway we can't, but just about everything else we can.
Right. Within the limits, right, yeah.
Okay, anything else under open discussion?
Just one more thing I wanted to bring up to the, uh, council, and I will be sending this out in a spreadsheet in the next, uh, couple of days. But I did take a look at where we are for personnel expenses for, uh, two thousand and eighteen. So, based on January through June of two thousand and eighteen, uh, looking at expenses, we're at about one-third uh, of our total, uh, annual allocation. So, I will get those numbers and that information to you later this week. But, uh, with that said, I think we're, obviously, there are some things, uh, such as the, um, you know, the, uh, library, which will make a one-time payment, uh, of, which will be, be paid at a later date. Uh, there's some ambulance, you know, expenses that are paid, uh, uh, at different times, but I think we're, you know, quite well situated, so I just wanted to bring that to your attention and let you know that I w- will be putting that together in a spreadsheet, sharing with you where we're at, but then also trying to account for some of the changes that we've made, obviously, uh, looking at some of the departments, uh, police department, I mean, now that that's up and running, fully staffed, uh, it has some part-time people coming on board, that might be a little different. Uh, administration, once we get, uh, the administrative assistant position filled, that may have some impact. But, uh, that's where we currently are, so. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to take it, and, uh, I can look at, uh, responding to anything further that you have once I get this out to you by email.
Any applicants yet for the administrative assistants?
We have two applicants, uh, we, initially, when the posting went out, we had quite a few people who expressed an interest, uh, through Facebook. And Annie has responded to those individuals, inviting them to fill out a paper application. We've received two. And it's going to continue to be open for about another, um, week and a half. And then we'll take a look at, uh, what we've got and proceed to schedule some, some interviews, so. Hopefully, some of that few leads for us, and hopefully that'll, uh, work out, so, we're hopeful, so.
What other topic I'm thinking, I'm gonna change the, um, how's the cleaning on the T S C building doing? Have you heard anything or?
Yep, it's been cleaned. We've got, uh, dehumidifiers and fans right in there, right now to keep kinda that airflow going. Um, I have not heard of any, uh, showings as of recently, um, but did have, I can't remember if it was council member, somebody who was in there, maybe perhaps it was, uh, Amy Newsom, who said that, uh, you walk in and it just, it smells better, fresher.
I hope so.
So hopefully that's going to make a difference.
Do we get that ceiling panel fixed in that room where it's got the water stand on it, hanging a half out of the ceiling?
The, the challenge.
I can take a ladder and go fix it if we have to.
Yeah.
It looks like.
Crap.
I, I don't know that we have the, the correct size ceiling tile to replace it, but, yeah, we might as well just pull it down and.
We can put a stain killer on there and put a little paint on it.
Okay.
And pop it back in place and it looks, you know, and if Kirby doesn't have time, time would be more than willing to go up there and take care of it. It's not a problem, all I have to do is ask.
We'll, we'll get that taken care of, yeah. Yep, yep. Thanks, Tom.
I probably got the stain killer at home, so is that anything that caused the city to die?
It's good to see that I'm not the only one that those little things bug.
Well, you're gonna walk in and look at a building, you're walking.
And you see that thing first, yeah.
First thing you're gonna say is the ceiling, it's stained, you're gonna have to address.
Which means usually, a leaky roof.
Yeah, that's the first thing you're gonna put into their head, we need to take care of those things.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Yeah, I agree.
If we wanna move it.
I agree.
If it was in our home, we'd do that.
Yep. Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
Motion by council member Highland, second, council, uh, Batch to adjourn, all in favor say aye, opposed, no.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carried at eight fifty-seven.
We thought that meeting was gonna be short.
Yeah.
Who said that?